Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Organizational Meeting for October 22nd, 2018. I'd call the meeting to order. This is a meeting that is held once a year, sort of on the anniversary of City Council's election. It is really when we start the business of council for the course of the next year by making appointments to various boards and committees, as well as setting the schedule of our meetings. And so we're going to start a new tradition here at the City of Grand Prairie with this organizational meeting, and we're going to recognize Treaty VIII territory that the City of Grand Prairie sits on. You may have heard of recognition of the treaties in the past, but we don't necessarily always recognize or understand why we do that. And so if I could, I just wanted to share a little bit of history about Treaty VIII and why this recognition is important. Treaty VIII, as many people will know, is one of 11 numbered treaties made between the Government of Canada and the Crown and Canada's First Nations. The land covered by Treaty VIII is over eighty-four, sorry, 840,000 square kilometers, which is an area larger than France, and includes northern Alberta, northeastern British Columbia, northwestern Saskatchewan, and the southernmost portion of the Northwest Territories. The agreement was signed June 21st, 1899. Further adhesions to the agreement were signed that same year, July 1st, 1899, at Peace River Landing, July 6th at Dunnvegan, July 8th at Fort Vermillion, July 13th at Fort Chipewan, July 17th at Smith's Landing, July 25th and 27th at Fawn de Lac, August 4th at Fort McMurray, August 14th at Wabaskaw Lake, and further adhesions came about in 1900, on May 13th at Fort St. John, June 8th at Lester Slave Lake, June 23rd at Fort Vermillion, and July 25th at Fort Resolution. People who know their Alberta history will know that Alberta and Saskatchewan didn't in fact become provinces until September 1st, 1905. And further, the City of Grand Prairie wasn't incorporated as a village by the Province of Alberta until 1914. I provide this context because I believe it really helps people understand that the Crown, as represented by the Government of Canada or the Government of the day, made agreements with the First Nations people living on these lands before the Province of Alberta existed, before the City of Grand Prairie existed. And I think therefore it's very appropriate that we recognize those agreements and commitments made between the Government of Canada, which we are a creation of ultimately via the Province of Alberta, and those people who lived here for generations and eons before us. So therefore, as we start the work of council for this year, I believe it's appropriate that we acknowledge that the City of Grand Prairie exists on the traditional territory of the Treaty VIII peoples. There are many indigenous people whose ancestors have walked this land since time immemorial, including the Cree, Beaver, Dene, and Métis people. And in the spirit of reconciliation, we also acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands of the Horse Lake First Nation, the Duncan First Nation, Surgeon Lake Cree Nation, the Indigenous Community of Kelly Lake, and Region 6 Métis Nation of Alberta. We are honored to share these lands, and we appreciate the opportunity to work together with the First Nations people of these communities, and we are grateful to serve along together and honor the calls for action of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission with this recognition. It's my great honor and pleasure to make that recognition as we start the work of this next council year. Thank you so much. That's the formal part. I know we have a number of invited guests who came this evening for that recognition. I want to recognize a number of members of the Grand Prairie Circle of Aboriginal Services and a number of other invited guests who came this evening to witness that. It is a moment of history. I don't believe any other Grand Prairie City Council has made a formal recognition of treaty territory at a council meeting, but it is becoming more and more a regular part of society. And I think for many of us who might not understand the history of the treaties, it's a great opportunity to sort of contextualize why our communities exist. And if we believe in the rule of law that says that provinces can create municipalities, and if we believe in something that is very commonly known in our area about Crown land, we always talk about the Crown land, there's all this activity happening on the Crown land. If there's any right for the Crown to call that their land, it only comes that way because of agreements that were signed and commitments that were made through the treaties. So it's been an honor and a pleasure to be able to make that recognition, and I hope that we'll do this at every regular City Council organizational meeting going forward. We do have some business to take care of before we get into our regular council meeting, which will adjourn this more formal meeting. We have some reports and council, you have in front of you, recommended schedule for council and standing committees for the period of October 23rd, 2018 to October 21st, 2019. Can I get a motion to approve that list of meetings as recommended? Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the appointment of standing committees and boards as recommended.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen, and that is for the schedule. Thank you. Any discussion or debate? Seeing Counsel Bressi, discussion or debate?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counsel Bressi.
Sorry, Mayor Given, just to confirm, are we voting on just the appointments or the appointments and the calendar?
I believe we should be voting just on the calendar for this first one. We'll do the following ones with appointments, and then as well the schedule of deputy mayor appointments.
Great. If we're voting on the calendar right now, then I'd like to move in an amendment.
Okay, what do you have?
That would be to strike the committee meetings on September 24th. The reason for that is that's the day before AUMA. I expect that there'll be an educational opportunity for council. I think it's one of the best educational opportunities that's available to us in a year. Today, counselor, this year, Counselors Thiessen, O'Toole, and I went, and it was hard to go there knowing that there's also work to do back home. So I suppose that we strike those meetings so we can take advantage of that educational opportunity next year.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote on Counsel Bressi's amendment. So this is on Counsel Bressi's amendment to delete the meetings of September 24th, 2019. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and so we'll move on to Counsel Thiessen's motion as amended. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. So we also have the, as referenced, the schedule for deputy mayor appointments for the same period. Can I get a motion to adopt that schedule as recommended, recognizing that there are, from time to time, council members may need to trade spots, and that does happen, and so we certainly can do that, but this basically sets the sort of order of who would be in charge if I get run over by a bus, I suppose. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that we accept the, I make motion to accept the deputy mayor calendar as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. And I shouldn't make light, obviously, council members that have done it know that the load of community engagements and events is fairly high, and so appreciate council members taking on some of those additional duties during their period as deputy mayor. Is there any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then finally, we have the recommendations for appointments to committees and boards. There aren't a number of significant appointments or significant changes, council, that I would point you towards. There are some rather minor ones, just in terms of balancing workload among council members. You'll see that Counsel Blackburn has been added to the Airport Commission, and Counselor Clayton has been moved to take on a couple of additional roles. We have Counsel Bressi as an alternate to the Grand Prairie Regional Recreation Committee. We have also added Counsel Clayton as an alternate to the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership, and Counsel Blackburn will be coming on the Community Advisory Board on homelessness. Are there, I think that's all of the substantive changes that I wanted to bring to council's attention. Could I have a motion to adopt the appointments as recommended? Counselor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Minhaus. I move the recommendation, the council adds the new committees.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Minhaus. Any discussion or debate? Counselor Friesen?
Thank you. I see a couple of mine missing.
Which ones are missing?
GP Sport Council and DTSS.
I think, Counsel Friesen, I think we see them on, there is a, there is a, if you're going by the hard copy that was handed out tonight with a couple of sort of wording updates. In the electronic council package, there's a second page that I think has Disabled Transportation Society. It's, yeah, so in the electronic package.
Thank you, then. Thank you, I'll look for that.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote on Counselor Minhaus's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. We'll look at management. Was there any further business to come before our organizational meeting? Okay, then we will adjourn the organizational meeting. We'll move into our regular city council meeting. If there was anybody who was not intending to stay for the entire city council meeting, and we wouldn't blame you, we enjoy having company, but if you weren't intending to stay for the entire city council meeting, now would be a good time to exit council chambers, as we're going to call our regular city council meeting to order, and I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." (Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to alumni from our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I get a motion for that set of minutes? Counselor Plot?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the minutes of the city council meeting held Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plot. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that'll take us to the adoption of the agenda. Council, I think we had one recommendation of an additional item, item 8.2, with respect to making some city lands marketable. I see Counsel Bressi is first in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Well, I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of item 8.2 disposition of city-owned land.
Thanks very much, Counsel Bressi. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and of course, as I look at my agenda, I see that there is an eight, and it probably would make more sense to run just 8.1 rather than 8.2, so I think that was the intent of the motion. Thanks, Counsel Bressi. And so we'll move on to delegations. We had two delegations let us know ahead of time by calling management that they wish to attend. I first have a representative from the St. Lawrence Centre, and then I have Representative Mr. Ruffnig with respect to single-family dwellings. So we'll start with item 5.1, representative from the St. Lawrence Centre. For any presenters that are coming forward, typically we like to have presentations of approximately five minutes. I'll ask everyone that comes if they would kindly introduce themselves for council as they start the presentation and for a recording secretary, and make yourself welcome. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and council, I'll start off by saying I think this is a wider chair. I'm shrinking, but that's fine. Much more comfortable.
Let's just assume it's the second.
Let's do that. My goal for visiting this evening was mostly because I don't think I've presented, sorry, I should say my name is Jared Goss, and I'm the project lead and president of the St. Lawrence Centre. We're a homeless drop-in program here in the city. We also coordinate a Saturday supper for the hungry through the Church of Christ on Saturdays. And my main goal here tonight was, just coming off the realization, I don't think I've spoken to this particular council about our services, and well, the last time I was here, things have changed significantly since. So I guess just to review, and if this is your first time hearing about the centre, to maybe inform you about a few details of what we do. In a nutshell, the centre was started because daytime support for homeless and street-involved individuals was really limited prior to 2015, and resulting, there was increased vagrancy in the downtown, lots of people without a warm place to go during the winter months especially. And it was found, actually during the winter, you could be without a warm place to go between meals at the Salvation Army or the Shelter MAT program closing in the morning, that sort of thing. Could be outside for about six hours. And so during those six hours, what did you do? You slept in bank vestibules, you came and hung out at HIV North, which was a personal frustration of mine. You went to the library and hopefully didn't fall asleep while you were reading your book. So beginning in 2015, the St. Lawrence Centre opened partnering with the Salvation Army at the time, and we used their dining room in between the times that they were using it to provide drop-in services for whoever would come by. If I sit here, the microphone's still working?
Maybe even just point it towards you, that's all the, yeah. There you go.
And so lots of things have changed since then, and I think many of you are well-informed, likely all of you are well-informed in terms of the struggle and particular issues that the street-involved population in our city are facing. And that certainly affected the work that the St. Lawrence Centre has been doing. I guess what I'd like to draw focus to first and foremost is the financial contribution the City of Grand Prairie makes to the St. Lawrence Centre. So not in 2015, but in that winter season, there was a contribution of $17,000, which came from the OSSI fund, provincial dollars that are then earmarked for the homelessness work in the community and part of winter emergency, as part of the winter emergency response, we received funding in our first year. In our second and third winters of operation, that grew to 25,000 from the same pot. And to kind of keep the application process very simple and not to create hardship on community groups, community social development, likely in partnership with another department who looks after the paperwork, you know, just kind of divvied up that money with another needed program in the city. This year, knowing that the centre has seen unprecedented attendance rates, we wrote in, I think it was July or August, to Community Social Development, saying, you know, that $50,000 that's sitting there that we're getting half of, man, we could really use all of it. And there was a meeting of the usual suspects and homelessness that got together, and we drew up recommendations and a process on how that might be awarded, and it was very inclusive. The application process closed last Friday, and friends of the centre who might apply and compete with that money, it's my understanding that there won't be any competition for that funding, which is really exciting, also embarrassing if I'm wrong, but it's an encouraging time. That winter emergency response funding is some of the only financial support that we're easily, or can, that the centre can easily access, or that is kind of right about the business that we're in. And the rest of our budget, which is edging up on about $200,000 a year now, comes from community groups such as the Rotary Clubs of Grand Prairie, any other grants that we can get our hands on, but more and more, it's individuals and business from our city that are getting behind our cause. To give you an idea of the number of people that are coming through the centre, our first year, it was about an average of 34 people a day, and that was in the good old days of booze and crack and simpler times, I tell you that. And we actually got some painting done, beautiful artwork, beading, that sort of thing, a lot of recreational activities. We continued that on to the next winter, where we grew to about 41 visitors a day, and it got busier. We moved locations into Rotary House, which added to the amenities that we could provide in terms of laundry, showers. People can now have an area to sleep, and also the overhead is absorbed in one way or another by Rotary House, which is essential to our survival as well. In the 2017-2018 year, we averaged 52 people through our doors, pardon me, during the winter. And in the first year of our winter season, which was October 1st, we're kind of October to March, considering our winter season, sorry, last year it was 52 people averaging throughout the season, and on the first day of winter this year, it was 82 people. So it is an additional 30 people from last winter through the doors of the drop-in program. Primarily the individuals that come and spend a day at the St. Lawrence Centre are spending their nights at the MAT program or sleeping rough within the city limits. The last time I presented here, council, I talked about the single overdose that we had in our first operational year, and it was quite remarkable the way that two volunteers busted into this bathroom where this fellow was using, pulled a needle out of his arm and provided CPR until EMS arrived. The next year, the next calendar year, we responded to six events like that, and so we noticed, well, things are changing a little bit in Grand Prairie, but still manageable, a little exciting. In the last year, so just October to October, my team and I, which is two other people, responded to 44 overdoses in the St. Lawrence Centre and area, so that's just on our shift, basically. What we consider an overdose is where the individual is non-responsive, so they stop breathing. Rotary House uses a kind of a broader definition of overdose, just that individual requiring intervention and would have a higher number, but also Rotary House is responsible for looking after people throughout the night. So the St. Lawrence Centre, we have the easier job of hanging out with people during the day when not everybody is even up. So the emotional impact and psychological consequences of that, not only on our homeless population, but our service providers, has been very significant. However, the support that we've had through mental health services here in the city has been commendable, and then also just realizing what our emergency services are going through as well. This is just a small portion of what they see every day. We had the EMS respond to, and I can't remember, it was still cold, so I think it was early, early 2018, EMS responded to an overdose, and usually they kind of tried to talk that individual to going back to the hospital, but they were quickly resetting their equipment and saying, okay, you're good. And it was the 16th that they had responded to that particular morning. So we're very much, and we, meaning the city, are just on the receiving end of these global and national trends in terms of the epidemic, and I know this, the council is, sorry, this council is doing some work in that area as well. The kind of dream budget for St. Lawrence Centre is to spend between $230,000 and $250,000 here, and that would keep us with, we have kind of ballooning maintenance costs as more and more people are experiencing homelessness and bringing more and more wear and tear on the space at Rotary House as well as the yard. But that would be three full-time staff, a couple of casuals, and then paying for program materials that just come up or, you know, making up for donations that don't walk through the doors in terms of razors, winter wear items, that sort of thing. That budget there, you know, a couple more years of solid fundraising, I feel like the community will get behind that. Every year brings a little bit of a struggle in terms of fundraising, and I'm very thankful for the personal networking that most of this council has done to make sure that we keep our doors open. However, when I look at sustainability, so we've seen a 52% increase in the number of people walking through the door, a 633% increase in the number of overdoses that we're responding There needs to be more formal support from different levels of government for daytime shelter in Grand Prairie, and that's kind of my ask here today. In August, I wrote a letter to Community Social Development talking about the need for increased funding. They've certainly responded to that and do a wonderful job of circling the wagons, but my second request in that letter was to help the St. Lawrence Centre, but also other homeless serving organizations, come up with a plan to make sure that there's a day shelter service in Grand Prairie. And management of CSD was very supportive, but I think they need a directive from council in terms of doing some more extensive hitting up the province. There are day shelter services in Red Deer, there are day shelter services in Edmonton as well. Some are funded by municipalities, some are funded by provinces. I have been told by provincial officials that they will never fund day shelter services, but a number of years ago, we were also told that the Province of Alberta would never sell pot, and here we are. So I've got a letter from our governors and stakeholders just expressing further conversation between administration council and the stakeholders in terms of how we get more money in our community for the people that need it.
Okay, and so with all of our presentations, we obviously have an opportunity for council members to ask questions, and if I can just ask one clarifying question. So is your request, is it a budget request to the City of Grand Prairie necessarily, or is it a, or is it a request to the City of Grand Prairie to support you in your work with getting the province to bring more money to Grand Prairie?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, Mayor Given. It is likely the support around building a coalition to lobby the provincial government.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thanks for coming in and presenting, and it's, it is one of those services that's funny in that if you invest in it, you actually save the taxpayer a lot more money in terms of medical costs and interactions with the justice system, so I appreciate getting an update. A question for you is, as you're growing, I haven't been in there yet this year, but in past years when I've popped in, it seemed like a busy place. How are you guys doing for space requirements? How long can you sustain the growth you're doing in the space you're in? Are there other options available for you if you outgrow that?
Yeah, the space that we use is the Rotary House MAT program area. I think on paper, we actually had the fire inspector in today and didn't get, you know, flying colors, but we've got a passing score. That space is funded for 15 individuals, the night program, likely on a cold night will serve 60, and I think capacity-wise is around 35, so don't tell everyone. The daytime program, we manage a little bit differently because people are not always expected to be laying down and sleeping like they are at night, so people are moving in and out, they're using every corner of the building, that sort of thing. The shelter has had discussions with Community Social Development about possible expansion and federal and provincial dollars to do that, so hopefully that's one opportunity if we remain in the space. The greatest hurdle in terms of just accommodating the sheer numbers is that there's limited, limited locations for this type of work in the city for a number of different reasons, so I guess we'll stack people too high.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Bressi. Any other questions for the delegation? Counsel Thiessen?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Sorry, I just jumped in. Recently, we just did our point in time count, happens every two years, as you're well aware, and I know you play a role in that as well. We had a tripling of our numbers of homeless people. Do you have any ideas, being on the ground floor, as to why that would be? You know, two years ago, we were at about 86, and this past year, we're close to 250, which is obviously bleeding over into the work that you do, but any, does anybody out there that's getting homeless services provided by them, have they intimated why they're there, where they come from, or do we just have an influx of people coming to the city to get services, or have we priced them out of the rental market?
Right. Thanks, Counsel Thiessen. It's a bit of a mix of all of those. The point in time count in previous years, if I can be so bold, I think it was under reporting our homeless population for a couple of different reasons. Well, a main one, it's methodology. So there probably would have been more accurate numbers if we got estimates from service providers such as HIV North, Canadian Mental Health Association, Rotary House, that sort of thing, as opposed to counting individuals on a particular night. There are good, there's good statistical backing as to why you would want to do that and standardize across the country. Unfortunately, it ends up with this number that is more of a homelessness value as opposed to a homeless census, and it is an indicator. However, what we've seen over the last little bit and why the shelter, Rotary House- However, what we've seen over the last little bit and why the shelter, Rotary House, has been full since September of last year is in large part to do the large area that it serves. So Rotary House is pretty much the only emergency shelter for the Northwest. So, you know, High Level doesn't have much of a homelessness problem because there's a whole lot of people from High Level living in Grand Prairie at the shelter or in the bush. The other one would be the complex nature of housing individuals who are chronically homeless. And so that's a major impact on the work that we do. So we have a vibrant Housing First initiative within the city that does see quite a bit of success. But there's individuals in that program that are often evicted and then go for a long period of time before they're housed again because of the lack of supported and supervised housing options for them. So really, the drop-in center and the MAT program end up being the supervised supportive housing that's available, which is a little uncomfortable cramped in one big room. So there's also some interesting things that happen this year in terms of just demographics. There's a heck of a lot more young people as well. And that might just be kind of the aging out of certain systems. Got a lot more eighteen to twenty-year-olds than I've ever seen before, too, which I think is an impact of the epidemic as well. I used to be able to hide your drug use a little bit better at home. And now that you're overdosing, mom and dad get to know about it a little sooner, and so does your wife. And that puts you at risk of homelessness just because of conflict.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Any other questions for the delegation? No, seeing, seeing none, thanks very much for the update, Mr. Gossen. And so just, just again to clarify, it really is, if there was an action coming, delegation business dealt with towards the end of our council meeting. And so we probably want to refresh ourselves about what it might be. It was really about activating the city's resources or the community's resources to lobby the province. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much for being here, and I don't see anybody else in the queue, so, but you have a document you want to share with council.
It's just to make things official.
Sure, I think Ms. Walker will be happy to grab that and we'll make sure that gets circulated to council. Thanks very much for being here, Jared, thank you. Okay, as I said, we did have another delegation that let us know ahead of time, is Alan in the room? I don't, I don't see Mr. Ruffnag here. And so if he's not here, then we'll ask if there's anybody else who wish to present to council on any other community-related matter. Now would be the time, so you sort of saw the, the drill a couple of times there. If you come forward, if you just introduce yourself for council members and for a recording secretary, you've got about five or so minutes there, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions towards the end.
I'm Jason Scott, and here to speak to council. I'm here to speak to council on behalf of the citizens of Grand Prairie, the property taxpayers of Grand Prairie, about concerns that the direction that the city is taking and just really bring to light before you guys make any future decisions on budgets and stuff. A lot of this came to light, I mean, you've probably seen a couple of videos I posted, just to give you an idea of numbers. We had seventy thousand views, a hundred and ninety-four shares, nine hundred and sixty-seven likes. So there is a lot of concern out there. It's genuine concern, it's not just people complaining about snow removal and potholes. And as a property owner myself to bring this forward, I went back, I did a bit of research, going back to two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten executive summaries, quoting fiscal responsibility, allocation of resources, being a customer responsible organization that strives to be the best through continually improving. There was also a quote in there, and we knew this back in two thousand and eight, with industry located in what is traditionally rural Alberta, and most of their workforce choosing to live in traditionally urban Alberta, we need a way to pay for facilities and services demanded by a rapidly growing workforce and families. It's possibly of my opinion and the opinion of the citizens of Grand Prairie that that's just been met with city taxes. Looking at two thousand seventeen, that same study done, there was a focus area capitalizing on growth. And in the preferred future, it said residents will realize value for their taxes, also seeing that that isn't happening. And many council members being voted in, and I'll quote a few, not any in specific, but, no, I do not, I have not spoken to one constituent that feels our city is representative of the very high taxes we pay. Couple of city council members that said yes. Small increases in council managed to address crime by adding more resources. The protective services budget is forty-three million dollars. Those small increases aren't that small, and we actually saw a crime increase from twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen in the city. Another quote here, I'm concerned with continual increase of taxes and concerned that internally our operational costs are still too high. We can build an even better community at an affordable cost. Feedback from the general public has been no. Yes, but we need to continue to find ways to save or increase revenue to keep our increases at bay. City-funded facilities should be more financially self-sufficient. Yes, I do, but I'd like to see your taxes reduced. People don't feel they're receiving good value currently. I strongly believe that there's many ways which can improve the value for our tax dollar. I'm not advocating for more taxes. So that's just some of the quotes from you people sitting on council. So I believe that there's an appetite for the people on council to do something as well. We're seeing, and you guys see this as well, being in real estate, I, I probably see it even more on a daily basis, is growth outside the city. Two thousand seventeen saw more multifamily in the county than started in the city. That's never happened before. We'll talk about values of properties. Year-to-date, homes in the city sold over five hundred thousand, there's been thirty-eight. Over six hundred thousand, there's been three home sales in the city of Grand Prairie. Let's put in perspective to the county. In that same time period, year-to-date, the county saw eighty-eight home sales over five hundred, and they saw fifty-one home sales over six hundred thousand. I'm not talking acreages, I'm talking about single-family dwellings in Carriage Lane, Westlake Village, Whispering Ridge, et cetera. Those are significant numbers, and they're going to continue to grow in favor of the county if something's not done. The people buying in those areas predominantly is, from my experience and speaking with other agents, is simply the tax savings. Another thing I wanted to talk about was new home sales in the city. We've been on a steady decline. I'll cite the numbers from two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen quickly for you. Two thousand and seven, obviously, was a good year, three hundred and thirty-six. Two thousand and eight, four hundred and forty-three. Two thousand and nine, three hundred and fifty-three. Twenty-ten, two eighty-eight. Eleven, two eighty-five. Twenty-twelve, four hundred and twenty-seven. Twenty-thirteen, three hundred and ninety. Twenty-fourteen, four hundred. Twenty-fifteen, two thirty-three. Twenty-sixteen, down to one fifty-nine. Twenty-seventeen, down to one forty-two. And year-to-date, we're at a hundred and ten new home sales on pace for one thirty-five. That'll be the lowest number of new home sales in the city in eleven years. Part of that, I mean, there's various things in play there, but we know the economy's gone up and down in that time period. But we've seen sales just continually fall. More and more people are looking to live in the county. And developing is getting very expensive, and taxes are being prohibitive. Just to give you an idea, the county of Grand Prairie, in that same time period, twenty eighteen marks our lowest volume. Twenty eighteen for the county marks their second highest volume in those eleven years. Talk about commercial sales really quickly. Year-to-date, there's been seven commercial sales in the city over a million dollars. There's been eleven in the county. And we're talking about a lot larger base in the city of Grand Prairie than the county. And a lot of it is to do with the forty percent reduction in taxes that the county has. I'm not expecting or advocating that the city would ever be able to come close to that. What I'm talking about is just a little bit more, not even saying you're fiscally irresponsible, but just really tightening in on spending. A couple more stats here, go through it quickly. Again, two thousand and three, we had a population of forty thousand two hundred and twenty-six. The taxes levied that year on properties, forty-three million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. If we equate that to the population, it's a thousand eighty-four dollars per person. It's impossible for me to equate it to the actual number of properties because I wouldn't be able to get that data. Two thousand and seven, we had fifty thousand two hundred and twenty-seven people, taxes levied sixty-six million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, thirteen hundred and thirty-one dollars per person. Back, now going to twenty seventeen, population growth, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-six. The tax is levied now, a hundred and thirty-nine million, three hundred thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, two thousand thirty-one dollars per person. That shows an increase from two thousand and three of two hundred and nineteen percent, and an increase from two thousand and seven of a hundred and eight percent. In that time period, we saw a fifty-seven percent higher tax base in the growth of the city, the population growth. But we taxed that base eighty-five percent more than we did in two thousand and three. The city also would have seen, and it was on your website, that we've got the highest tax rate in the province of Alberta. The city came back with some numbers on that and said, well, that's not quite right based on the average sale price of the homes in the city of Grand Prairie. The average sale price that was used by the city of Grand Prairie was two eighty-four, it was actually three twenty, three twenty-five, twenty-three. Puts us in twenty-second spot. Either way, if we're using that as some sort of barometer, it's clear to see that there's some work to be done and some improvement to be made. And as your quotes, we, we know that. Bill, I'll quote you. If everything was left the same as it was today, this is from you back in March, the council, after the municipal election, be facing a property tax of five to six percent. Nobody on council thinks this is realistic and wanted to give future council alternatives that were ready to go, which I respect and admire. So I'm here today not to criticize, I'm here today to bring forward some stats. I'd like to see the city of Grand Prairie grow. I mean, we all would. To do that, we need to, one of the, one of the key items is going to be budget and the amount of taxes that are going to be levied coming into the two thousand and nineteen budget and, and moving forward. I think that in doing so, you'd gain a tremendous amount of respect from the citizens of Grand Prairie. And the ones that are continuously complaining wouldn't really have that much to complain about. I admire the roads, honestly, and the snow removal. Taxes is a whole nother agenda that I'd like you guys to look at even more seriously than you have been based on the statistics I'm looking at.
If you have any questions?
I see a couple councilmembers in the queue, just appreciate sort of the quote, the reference of mine. I'd note that that was in advance of the municipal election, it wasn't from March of twenty eighteen, it was from March of twenty seventeen. And that was the last council ensuring that this council wouldn't have to deal with a five to six percent tax increase, which in fact, I believe we were down at around a one this term. And so in fact, I think that was a promise made and a promise kept on that one. Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks, thanks for coming in. I think a surprise to me last year when we went through budget is we didn't really hear from anybody at all. And I was disappointed, I mean, I hope it's just because they were sick of us from elections. I'm hoping we, as we come into budget this year, I'm hoping we hear from more people. So, so thanks for coming in. I would agree with you that there's, there's room for movement on our taxes here in the city. Kind of curious, I'd love your perspective, if, if we do find that room and it is council's will to take advantage of that room, should we be targeting all savings to residential? Should we be targeting some, all of it to commercial industrial? Should we be splitting the difference? Just where should we be looking for tax relief?
I think in all fairness, it should be split equally. And I think any tax relief is going to be very welcomed, no matter how small, whether it's business, whether it's residential. That said, it would be nice to foster more growth in the commercial, but we've got to look at the commercial as being residential as well, right? So it all, it all comes together as one.
Thanks, Councilor Bressi. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in the queue, Councilor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Well, I'm always harping on data with stats for the council, so I of course appreciated all the data that was there. And I guess I'd ask if there's any way that we could, if you wouldn't mind sharing that with administration so we could, you know, properly vet that and make sure that, you know, they're accurate. I mean, I'm pretty confident they are, Jason, I know you like your numbers as well, but if that's something you can pass along, I'd really appreciate that.
Would I be able to email this, or I could leave this actually for council if they wanted as well?
Yeah, that, that would be great. You just, you, I was a little bit surprised, I guess, I know the city's lost the estate market, I didn't realize how bad it was, but I didn't realize the multi-market was something we were starting to lose as well. Can, can you just give me those stats back, please? I'm just kind of curious what the stats were on the multi ones.
I didn't pull, I, I didn't get the exact stats on the multi, I just brought up the fact that the county had more multi-starts than the city. It's easy to pull up, I just didn't have it on this.
Okay. No, I, I appreciate that. I guess if I had one question to ask you back, is, is there an area or something that you'd suggest that we could look at? Is there some kind of low-hanging fruit that you see from, from your side that you think that we could address? Or, you know, it's kind of a slippery question, but I just, there's a lot of people that have thoughts and ideas. And if you're here, I guess I want to ask if you have one that you could zoom in on.
We had over eighty-five million spent on wages and benefits in two thousand and seventeen alone. When we're looking at, I'll just take for example, development services. If we did three hundred and thirty-six new home starts in two thousand and seven, and we're on pace for a hundred and thirty-five this year, what is the number of people employed in that sector? And would it not be cut by two-thirds as a result of the volume steadily decreasing? That's just one sector, I'm not sure about other sectors. Transit costs seem extraordinarily, extraordinarily high. I'd met with the last city manager and we'd talked over lunch about possibly, I mean, just throwing around the idea of privatizing some of the services that the city offers, whether it be snow removal or transit. That'd be something you guys would have to look at, and I don't even know if it's feasible. But maybe there just needs to be some cuts and some tough decisions because the money, the money simply isn't there without increasing taxes. The city revenue has decreased year over year, while the property taxes have increased. So that's up to you guys to make some tough decisions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Platt. I don't see anybody else in the queue. And seeing nobody else there, then thanks very much for your presentation this evening. Happy to see you, thank you. And I hope you'll encourage, I hope you'll take part in the city's budget consultation that was launched, or will be launching October twenty-fifty, may or may not have seen the releases. It looks like you've done some pretty good scouting of information, but absolutely, you know, it would be really helpful is if you do post a video of this, if maybe you could share a link to the city's budget consultation so that all those hits that you get could be people that could contribute and see the impact of cutting services and how significant an impact it may or may not make to the property taxes. That'd actually be really helpful.
Certainly, thank you.
Thanks very much. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward to present to council this evening? Last one, last time, if there's anybody else that wished to come forward to present at our delegation portion of our agenda? Okay, seeing none, well, this is an opportunity that exists at a very regular city council meeting. We will deal with delegation business towards the end of our agenda. But we will move on, and we have no public hearings this evening. I don't believe we had any items of unfinished business, and so that'll take us to our additional item, item eight point one with respect to marketable land. Do we have a council member prepared to make a motion on that item? Councilor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approved lots legally described as Plan zero-nine-two-seven-three-one-one, Block six, Lot sixty-five, and Plan zero-nine-two-seven-three-one-one, Block six, Lot sixty-six, as marketable. Just looking, I think administration's going to introduce it, so I don't have to.
Thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. I will look to Deputy Director Glavine or Mr. Halliday for an introduction. Mr. Halliday?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Social background, the city is the owner of two residential lots in the neighborhood of Summerside South within the city of Grand Prairie. The lands were transferred to the city as a land exchange in two thousand and eight between Podolin Land Company, Inc. and the city. Both lots are low-density residential lots zoned. Both lots are low-density residential lots, zoned, small lot residential, RS. Management is proposing that the residential lots owned by the city of Grand Prairie in Somerside South be marketed for public sale, and revenue from the sale be directed towards supporting the acquisition of land for future council-supported incentives.
Okay, thanks very much. Are there any questions for administration at this time? Any discussion or debate? I'll note for council, although I can't, I was aware that we had these lots, I don't remember the providence and the deal that happened at the time, but absolutely, the intention was always that they would be for future affordable housing. This opportunity to leverage those dollars to find land that may be more ideal is a great opportunity, and so I appreciate the recommendation. Is there any other discussion or debate on the motion? I guess just one final thing for, for management, and so there will be a, ultimately, a public process. What are the process steps after council designates land as marketable? Is that maybe Director, Deputy Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. After they are designated as marketable, we'll determine the appropriate method of disposition for them, which may be in-house process, but more likely utilizing the services of a realtor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Glavine. And so if there aren't any other questions, again, not seeing anybody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, and that'll take us to committee business, and we'll start with item nine point one, Council Thieson, I think that was your meeting, Community Living from October ninth.
I guess it was, Mayor Given, and I would move that council approve the minutes from the October ninth Community Living Committee meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Thieson. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct? Seeing any, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you, thank you. That motion carries. Council Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. There was one piece of, one, one item coming off of that agenda that we're moving, we're talking about here tonight, and I would move that council give approval for management to enter into agreements with all participating municipalities for the provision of transit services for the Rural Transportation Pilot Program. If you weren't at a committee meeting, this is just an agreement between all the parties within the region to operate a transit service, just a pilot project that the city of Grand Prairie would, I guess, run and operate as funded by, by the partners. One of those first would come into place would be one, one bus, a rural route from Claremont to Sexsmith, would have eight return trips per day between Grand Prairie and Claremont, and two of those trips would extend to Sexsmith, and future routes heading out to Wembley, Beaver Lodge, and Heith, that would be intermittent on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. This would come at no cost except for the administrative services of the city of Grand Prairie, and all parties, especially the county of Grand Prairie, would be chipping in to ensure that their residents have access to transit services, and will move forward after a year of evaluation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, obviously a number of members of council are familiar with it from committee, so I don't see anybody ringing in, I'll call for the vote on Council Thieson's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Council Thieson, anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Oh, there was a lot. I guess I'll highlight first and foremost, right off of the director's service area, just for the members of the public here, that are no longer here, I guess, but who are watching at home, and the ones who are here. The, we had an increase in memberships by four hundred and thirty-four members after our Coca-Cola Eastling Center one-week free trial period in September. So during that time, though, there was some bad news, with the good news is, the bad news was that there was a substantial rip in the liner of the Lazy River that was discovered, and so that is currently under, under, I guess, repair, and will remain closed until it is done. The city was also granted occupancy to the CKC Groundsides at the end of September, and speaking of which, we also have a process of naming rights that is underway, so we have entered into stage three of that, and management is connecting with each interested party, and we'll be having one-on-one conversations, tours, and information sessions to better determine the needs and the fit, as whether or not we want those names to exist on there, and if they are the best offer available. The Dave Bar Community Center will also be offering free public skates this winter as part of a program sponsored by Seven Generations Energy, so we think are corporate partners in that. And as far as parks go, the construction of the Bike Skills Park is proceeding well. The fall tree planting program has begun, and the commissioning of the Bear Creek Pool is just wrapping up this week, one, one thing of which was the commission of the water slide, and some members of council and the public were able to rip down those slides to make sure that everything was, was A-OK, and so far, so good. Can't wait to see the report on that. Also, we had a request come in for one point four million dollars in regards to the Grand Prairie and Catholic School Board with their new, with their new school, the Performing Arts Center at the John Paul II School, to put into storage. Now, we had a bit of an update on how it's going to run operationally, it was a presentation that was done in conjunction with Grand Prairie Life Theater, who is going to do all the operations for that. Committee heard the presentation and decided to send it back for more information and not refer to, to budget at the time, and we look forward to seeing what kind of reduced budget they may come back to, to request of our committee and then council later on in the future. Aside of that, no other exciting business to really report upon. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Thieson. So that'll take us to nine point two, the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Councilor O'Toole, is that yours?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to move the council to approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October ninth, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Anything that we need to correct? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Well, we had kind of a, not necessarily a relaxed meeting, but not a heavy agenda. How does that sound? But we did get a report from our Corporate Services Director, Mrs. Susan Walker, and it was a verbal report on the things that are being completed and things that are in process. It's in the minutes of our meeting here. We did get correspondence, County of Grand Prairie, Upper to Community Partnership, IT Infrastructure, and we had a request to join them in a partnership with the feasibility study, and which we will be discussing in the future. And also, we had Counselors Clayton, Counselor Clayton initiated the discussion on the need for the city to have an infill strategy prepared and implemented, and, and we'll be seeing more of that in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole, for that update on the committee, and I think that takes us to nine point three, the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting, and I think, Council Blackburn, you're going to step in and handle that set of minutes for us?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd like to move that council approve the minutes of the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, October sixteen, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Thanks very much, Council Blackburn. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Anything you'd like to care to highlight for us, Councilor Blackburn?
Thank you, there are a couple of things. I think there's lots of knowledge of the fact that one of the things we looked at was the approval of a development permit to, for a change of use for a community-of-reach facility at what we know as the Parkside Inn, and the committee approved that change. And just wanted to make note that, at the same time that we made that approval, it was moved that the committee direct management to work with the applicant to establish a neighborhood advisory committee, to develop a list of onsite physical improvements, to identify opportunities to support safety improvements on private properties surrounding the area, and to report back to the committee within thirty days. So I think that we're showing some interest and some urgency in making this temporary facility something that will work for those that need it and for those that live near it. The other thing that I'll mention just very briefly is that we had our usual update from the Downtown Rehab Project, and things at the time of that meeting appeared to be on track for completion by the end of October. We're looking forward to seeing, to seeing that road reopened and for people to be able to appreciate the changes that we've made there. That's all I'll cover for now. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Council Blackburn. I think that handles all of our committee business for this evening. We had no items of correspondence, and so I think that brings us to our delegation business. First, we had Mr. Gosson with the St. Lawrence Center. Councilor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. In regards to this delegation, I would move that council, that council direct administration to add daytime shelter service needs and advocacy opportunities to the next Community Living Agenda. And I know that's different than our usual dealing with these, but I do think that the specific ask that was made was to do some advocacy on behalf of the, of the center community, and with the provincial election looming, the window for any sort of advocacy is closing very quickly, so I don't think we have time to go through our normal process of ever, written report done and all of that. Also, I don't know if it needs that many resources, so I'd like this to be discussed at the next Community Living meeting, so that's why I'm making this kind of unusual motion for us.
Okay, sounds actually pretty typical. Item shows up at council, and then we refer it to the committee, and, and, but date-specific in this case, sort of to the next committee rather than sort of as, as workload permits. Certainly appreciate that. Any other discussion or debate? Council Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I really appreciate Council Bressi's motion. I think it implies action, not to generate a report or the potential of or whatnot, but that the need is urgent, and it's here now, and we need to act upon that, and I think Council Bressi spoke to that very well. I myself was struggling with the, with the words on paper, and I was going to ask for help, and his quick finger saved me that task, so thank you for that. I will be supporting this motion.
The, I think the opportunity to go to committee will give us a chance to get a little bit more detail on exactly about the issue. My other sort of consideration was, we could just, if, if the concept is something generally we're supportive of, we could write a letter, sort of, you know, sort of direct the mayor, write a letter on behalf of the city in support of, but that probably would be a stronger position if, number one, it was sort of, it had all the details in it, and secondly, if council members also knew all the details, and then that way, each of us could be advocates as we sort of interact with provincial politicians from time to time, so I think useful approach. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and then we had our second delegation, Mr. Scott, with respect to, I guess, city budget, city budget input. Any other motions arising? Councilor Plat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess for me, I'd like to see us take this to the appropriate standing committee, which I guess would be Corporate Services, to review the data that Mr. Scott presented and see, see if the accuracy of it, I guess for me, I'd like to know if it is accurate, if it could be done, if, if how that would have imp, implicate my decisions around budget. So just like to see those numbers go to Corporate Services to verify their accuracy.
Okay, that motion is obviously in order. Counsel, any council member can refer anything to any standing committee, and so that motion is feasible. Council Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to vote against this motion. The reason is, I really do think that we need to take those words seriously. That being said, I don't think that the numbers or any analysis of them are really going to change my opinion that there's, that we need to find rooms for savings in this organization. I don't see them, I don't see any analysis changing my vote on anything. I'm concerned as we're coming into, as we're coming into budget time, I know that all of our staff, especially in finance, are working incredibly hard, set us up well to be able to have a great budget debate, and I don't want to get in their way of that. I think it might actually make it harder for us to find opportunity to realize savings if we're burning them with extra work right now, and I just don't see what it's going to do with, whether the numbers are completely accurate or a little off. We know that our tax rates are high compared to the county and a lot of other municipalities here, and I think that I personally have a lot as I see that, see, see some of that gap shrink, no matter what those particular numbers say.
Thanks, Council Bressi. Councilor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be not, I will not be supporting this motion either. I think that our financial folks have plenty to do between now and budget. We have given them direction similar to what we heard from Mr. Scott, and I don't think that, you know, one or two percent or a few numbers out will really change the direction of this council. I think we're, we've given some good direction in, in the way we want to go, and that's, that's good enough for me at this point.
Thanks, Council Friesen. Council O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much. I will not be supporting this either. I just, four hours ago, I spent an hour with our finance department and Ms. Walker, and I think we're going to have some good news stories coming out here. I really truly believe that administration has worked very, very hard and answered the call of council over this last year, and I think we're going to be quite surprised and quite happy with the way the budget's going to turn out, so I will not be supporting this.
Thanks, Council O'Toole. Council Thieson?
Thank you very much. I'm going to chime in and say that I agree with all of my previous three council members, that administration has done an incredible job as to putting together a budget for us, but he didn't say the next meeting, I guess, the appropriate standing committee, the Corporate Services. This is all going to happen after budget, and I think Council Plata has every reason to, to make that motion, and that it's not an, I guess, it's not a bad motion, and it's not something that we shouldn't always strive to look into and to try to explore any further opportunities. I don't think it's going to affect this year's budget, and I also don't think it's going to bog down our administration with reports, but looking at my calendar, I think we have budget before the next Corporate Services Committee meeting, so there's time to put together those numbers, and, and I'd like to see that, too. That's information that I think is going to help, help us make decisions in the future, and I don't know if Mr. Scott left those, those documents, I think I saw him walk out with them, but hopefully he will email them to us and send them in, and I would like to see them thoroughly evaluated and, or at least have it presented before council to their accuracy and as a measuring stick for us to maybe do better, so I appreciate Council Plat's motion, so I will be supporting it.
Thanks, Council Thieson. Council Plat, we'll come back to you to, to close. I'll just say that I also won't be supporting the motion. I really appreciate the input and look for citizens to give us input on a regular basis. I think many of the numbers weren't unknown to many of us on council, I think they're likely not unknown to management, and I'm not sure that all of them necessarily are relevant. I appreciate sort of the, the point being made that more properties are selling in the county than in the city, and I don't need the data necessarily to see that, I believe the data that was there, and I know that our economic development team, in fact, actually sends around a significant amount of data like that on a regular basis to inform not just council but also the community. And I, I guess, in terms of wise use of city dollars and city resources, that data's all freely available, and any one of us could go and find it from similar sources to where Mr. Scott found it. I would rather our city staff are working on actually delivering services to residents rather than combing through other publicly available data, so I also won't be supporting the motion. Council, sorry, I'll just ask if anybody else wanted to get in the queue before I go to Councilor Plat to close. Make sure Councilor Plat gets closing word.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I guess the reason I want that is, it is data, and I think out of respect to the business community, somebody took their time and the energy to get all that data collected. We come here every two weeks, and we have lots of people present, and almost every single time it goes to a committee, and I think it's quite disrespectful if we don't give the business community, or at least this person's put in this much time with this much following, at least that. I don't care if it comes before budget, I love it before budget, it doesn't have to happen before budget, but I guess it's a little disappointing when we're trying to build some rapport and some confidence back from our business community that we'd be just dismissive on some data that honestly could, we could do. So I, I'd ask you to support the motion because I'm more worried about the optics of us starting to look more business-friendly than we maybe have in the past.
Thanks very much, Council Plat, for that close. That was to close the discussion debates, we'll move on to the vote. Please vote. Thank you very much. That motion does not carry. Councilor Bressi?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Given. I, I understood, I understood the closing, closing statement there, so I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a different mo, motion, and I would, I would move that we refer this matter to the appropriate standing committee for discussion with, with Mr. Scott's documents to be attached to the agenda. And my intention of that is, I agree with you, I don't want to just, I don't, I don't want to just brush that presentation off, but also, there were a lot of numbers there that I heard that I couldn't read, read because they weren't in front of me, so to tell you the truth, I- So to tell you the truth, I, I need to sit down with those numbers on unpack before I decide, is there much there for me to be digging deeper and deeper into? And do I want to see administration spending time on it? So my intent with that definitely, with this, with voting against that previous motion definitely wasn't to blow off that, that presentation. I think it definitely is worth, and I'd support having more discussion about that in council. I'd like to have some more of that discussion before we have administration spending some of their time and some of their effort and some of our taxpayer resources on it.
Okay, so councillor Bressi, what was your motion?
So my motion was that we refer, that we refer to, that we refer this matter to the appropriate standing committee, committee and with Mr. Scott's documents attached to the agenda.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Bressi. That motion obviously is in order. Councillor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I appreciate that councillor Bressi. I do think it's important that we at least take the time to review what he had said. I agree, there was a lot of data there. I was trying to write it down, I couldn't get it all, that's why I was wanting to see it. But I do think from that data, we, we maybe can start looking at some of the departments in the city, unnecessary departments or that's another wording, some of those numbers and how we might make, make, make our thoughts moving forward. It was a little disheartening to hear that now we're losing the multi, potentially losing the multifamily. And although I know we do a lot of data on, on, and Mr. Glavine does a great job of getting data out, we don't do a lot of data to see how we're doing against our, our county. And so I, I think that's the, the kind of conversation I think would be great to have at corporate services. So thank you for that.
Thanks councillor Plott. Councillor Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. With all due respect, respect to Mr. Scott and the presentation that he made, the point that I got from his discussion is that taxes are high and we need to fix it. And he was good enough to collect some data that would support his argument. However, we all know that there is a challenge with our, our tax rate and that we're challenged to do something about it. I think that actually analyzing the data that he brought forward is with respect, more than we need to do. He, he made his point and I would like to see us go through the budget process, have a look at the kinds of challenges that, that we're facing and the kinds of solutions that we as a council are willing to tackle. But I, I really don't think that taking the, the arguments of, of Mr. Scott and turning them into sort of the foundation for our, for our efforts, I, I don't think it would be worthwhile. So I won't be supporting this motion either.
Thanks councillor Blackburn. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will not be supporting this motion either. I heard the, the points that Mr. Scott made, that he did back up with data that he had gathered. And I don't think that I heard a single point that didn't bear consideration and some bear significant consideration. However, I think that those that we do want to investigate further, we can gather our own data and know that it's accurate from the get-go rather than spending time looking at what is provided to us by, by someone else and deciding whether that's accurate or not. I think if we just bring in our own data on the points that we do want to review carefully at this budget, that would be the more time sensitive and, and labor sensitive way to go. And that is why I will not support this motion. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Friesen. I've got a few others in the queue and I'll do the same as before. I'll go to councillor Bressi to close. Councillor Bressi, actually it would be easier. Thank you. We'll go to councillor Platt and then councillor O'Toole.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just want to look at the last, the council minutes that are in front of us. We had four delegations last time moved to, with Wayne Drysdale, we sent it to the appropriate standing committee, received the information. Grace Murray, we moved to, moved to a standing committee. David Clark received her information. And yet, when we have something from the business community, we want to be dismissive. And that's, I, I'm honestly, this is more for me about, it seems disappointing to me that when something from the business community is brought forward, that we're just being dismissive with it. Maybe the wording needs to be perfect to get this through, but in the, in the year that I've been on council, I've never really seen us not push something or receive information or not putting something to a committee. So I'm a little bit disappointed that we're just saying, well, it's good data, but really it's just data. I mean, with all due respect, we're talking about point account time and that got everybody excited. That's, that's really good data and we want that data. So I don't understand why we're so worried about trying to find out more information about this stuff and at least have a discussion about it. So I can appreciate budgets coming up and it doesn't have to be before budget, but I just think it's, it's disappointing that we don't want to actually have a conversation about it.
Thanks councillor Plott. Councillor O'Toole? Not sure. Sorry councillor O'Toole.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, I'm not supportive of this motion. What I would like to see is, he said he would mail it to somebody. I don't know who that was, but I don't see why we can't just ask for that information there. And we can review it on an individual basis and not necessarily affect the administration at this point in time. And if somebody finds something there that is interesting and we need to look at, then we can deal with it at that point. But I do feel that a lot of the stuff that Mr. Scott had mentioned, we've already addressed in this last year. And there's some things that we're not going to be able to change no matter what we do, just because of the way the world turns. So I will not be supporting this motion.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Then we'll go to councillor Bressi to close. Oh, sorry, I see councillor Minas. Councillor Minas?
No, I did. I thought I put the wrong word. Thank you, Mayor. I like this idea had to data and everything, but we are not talking what we're going to do with the data and how we're going to bring the business back into the city, the commercial. This is where I'm struggling, either support the motion or not support or be putting too much work onto the administration to, if he got the data, just take the copy and we work on it. But we need, the main thing to me, we need to promote city to bring the business back. And he said, they sold seven commercial in Grand Prairie and there are eleven in the county. And we know the advantage county have because there's no tax benefit. We get 10% off the residential. And someday we have to open up the dialogue with them. So I, I won't support this motion, but we need something different motion to move ahead. Also, it's budget time. We should, we would card enough, our administration, we see what happened, then we go from there.
Thanks councillor Minas. I see councillor Thieson. And then that will be a round robin, where I think everybody's had an opportunity to comment on this and then we'll go to councillor Bressi to close.
All right, I'm not going to change any motions here. Appreciate councillor Bressi coming back and trying to support councillor Platt in some way, shape or form to get this to committee. So I'm still going to support it. I can do my math. I see this is going to be defeated, so I'm just going to do this a different way. I'm not going to amend a motion. But Mr. Jason Scott, you want to get this on committee? You come to committee as a delegation, you bring your paperwork, we'll all review it there and everything should be good. I'll do my best to push this through, but I want that data too. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Thieson. And would note that the delegation said that they would happily provide that information to council members. I think they already made that commitment. And so I would expect management to follow up and to circulate the information as promised by the committee at the table, or by the presenter when he was at the table in the room. So I wouldn't expect any less than council ultimately seeing what the public members said that they were going to share with us. Councillor Bressi?
Thank you. I want to clarify my intent to this motion and hopefully doing that will sway a few of you and it can pass. My intent of this is not, is that it goes to committee for discussion with some documents attached to the agenda. It's not that administration prepare a report. It's not that administration crunch numbers. It's literally that they take a document that we've been told will email and if not, they know who to call to get it and they attach to it agenda and they put one line on an agenda and then committee gets an opportunity to discuss that. That's not a, as by voting in the last one showed, I'm really sensitive to putting more work on administration. That is not my intention. What this motion does is it does two things. First of all, it makes sure that we actually do all get this document. And also there, and also it makes sure that these documents become a matter of public record. And if any members of the public who don't have the benefit of receiving emails council receives, say, hey, I'd like to take into those numbers too, they'll be able to go to our corporate services agenda and access these documents for themselves. So I'm not asking for work, for a lot of work on the part of administration. I'm asking to make it easy both for council and for the public to be able to take a look at these themselves. And if committee desires, it could have a very fulsome discussion on these. Or if committee desires, it could just receive this for information. But that's all I'm asking for. So I'm hoping that some of you will consider changing your minds.
Thanks very much councillor Bressi. That was to close, so I will call for the vote on councillor Bressi's motion. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Councillor O'Toole?
I'd like to make a motion to receive this information. Thank you.
To receive the presentation for information? And so just to clarify, there was an expectation that some information was going to be delivered to council, as was stated by the delegation. I think receiving for information should mean that all members of council should be circulated and copied with the information that was committed to by the delegation when they presented. Is that this, is that management's typical understanding, Mr. City Manager? I see the city manager nodding in agreement. And so I think the effect of the motion, although not exactly the same as certainly councillor Bressi's previous one, in terms of having that out there sort of in the public sphere, certainly council should have access to something that was committed to by a delegation in front of us. Any discussion or debate on councillor O'Toole's motion? I see councillor Friesen in the queue.
Thank you. I will support this motion and I really encourage my fellow councillors to give a great deal of weight to the points that he made, that Mr. Scott made tonight. He did make excellent points. They were backed up by his data. As we move into budget, we can challenge, we can take those points forward and challenge administration as we did last year to give us data that is, that would help us decide around those points. And it may not be the points, the, the data points that Mr. Scott brought forward. That's why I'm not as interested in, other than each individually looking at them, I'm not as interested in the data points as I am in the points that, that, that he made that we do really need to give a great deal of weight to. And I think that we will because he was very well spoken, did have some, some backup and made excellent points. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Friesen. Councillor Plott?
I know this sounds weird, but I won't be supporting the motion. If it's not going to be a conversation we're going to have at a meeting, then I honestly don't, we get emails every day from people, so I won't be supporting the motion just to get data that we're not going to have a conversation about.
Thanks very much councillor Plott. And just in terms of, appreciate your point. In recognition of that sort of typical process, unless a matter is otherwise dealt with on the agenda, council does typically have a motion to deal in some manner with each delegation that presents. And so you made reference to our last meeting from October 9th. You know, the only one that wasn't received for information or sent to a committee was one that was dealt with earlier on in the agenda, it says 5.4. But where there was a presentation made to council and councillor O'Toole. So just in terms of process, I think it's the, it's a way to close off, something showed up on council's agenda through public delegation and council acknowledges that that happened. I guess not receiving it for information means that we don't even acknowledge that it happened. If it isn't otherwise dealt with. So we just encourage council to support the motion. Appreciate hearing the information that was there and I look forward to seeing it. And, and just that as a process matter, I think you close it, close that off when somebody comes in front of you. Councillor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I am going to support this motion as all other motions have been defeated and I am privileged to sit beside Mr. Brian Glavine, who I've seen has been working diligently on getting in contact with Mr. Scott and hopefully that'll come forward to council. And then it can spur on future conversations. It's not going to get done here. I'm sure we're finding a way to get it done there. So thanks to our administration for that. And thanks for this passionate round of debate. Councillor Platt, I, I hear what you're saying, man, and we should have these conversations. So thank you.
Thanks councillor Thieson. I don't see anybody else in the queue. So I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries and I think that handles all of our delegations that presented this evening. I don't believe we had any notices of motion. And so that'll take us council member reports. There were a couple of council members that let me know ahead of time that they had some presentations and maybe we'll start with councillor Thieson. I think he attended on behalf of the city at the Northern Alberta Elected Leaders.
He certainly did. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. And first and foremost, let me say thank you to Mayor Given for not being able to make it to that meeting that day because it was an eye opener and I was privileged and honored to be a part of that. Just to gloss over some of the events, the day really got started when we had a presentation from writer Vivian Kraus, someone similar to Jason Scott, who spoke very passionately, but her presentation on Alberta and the environment, a closer look. Her presentation had nothing to do with what the title actually said. Basically, it was a presentation on how there are foreign interests mainly in the United States who are trying to keep Alberta's oil landlocked. She backed it up with stats, she backed it up with facts, she backed it up with the people who are backing it and said, we need to do something. We need to form a coalition and get together and say, we need to get our, our oil to tide water. And typically you'd think I'm an environmentalist and that I wouldn't, I wouldn't be supporting, supportive of that. But you know, it was very intelligent and it made a lot of sense and it had the room buzzing, which is great because we also had a presentation that was at AUMA on election advocacy and how to get your, your right messages to all the party leaders regardless of who comes out of the election on top. We also had a presentation from the Minister of Infrastructure and Communities, Minister Francois Philippe Champagne, from the government of Canada, talking about all the infrastructure investments that Canada's made and where they can do better and asking the crowd of how they could do better. Then we had a brief, a brief hello from Alberta Urban Municipalities Association Board Chair, the Mayor Brooks, Barry Morashita, who was short and brief. But then we got into some interesting territory and I took a couple snapshots of it, presented by Mayor Don Iverson and his team at machine learning. And the Alberta Edge is this. Do you guys know who one of the top municipalities or top organizations in the entire world is leading the charge on artificial intelligence? The City of Edmonton and the University of Alberta currently ranked number two on, on the AI list through the Financial Post. This is a direct quote, that the AI community in Edmonton may have gotten off to a quiet start, but is now viewed as a world leader in the field. In fact, number two in AI development and machine learning courses that are being presented. They're higher than MIT, Cornell University and the University of Texas at Austin, which had a chance to tour a few years back and see where their, their AI program was. It's fascinating and scary all at the same time, but the City of Edmonton was reaching out and saying, we've got $4.2 billion that we're investing into this in the downtown core. You can go check it out for yourself, but it totally shocked and surprised me and the room as well. So again, I urge you all to look into that. I never would have thought that the city I was born in would be a leader in artificial intelligence development and their goal is to not be number two. Their goal is to be number one. So if you get a chance, call up Don, I'm sure he'd love to tour you around it. He's looking for all sorts of investments because that's what it's going to take to take it to the next level. So one more time, thank you again, Mayor Bill Given, for being too busy to go to this meeting because I learned a lot and it like blew my Afro up into the wind. Thank you very much.
And I know it's not easy to blow that thing around. It's pretty, pretty stable. Thanks councillor Thieson for attending on the city's behalf. Certainly appreciate it. Councillor Plott, I think you had an update from the Tri-Municipal Industrial Partnership.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, we had a meeting on October 11th with the three regional partners in it. We're working on the ASP and they've, the engineering firm, the firm that we're using our consultant, I guess, on it, is giving us a completion date of January 31st. our consultant, I guess, on it, is giving us a completion date of January 31st. The area identified is 4,600 hectares, so it's a, it's a lot of land. The aberrational consultation, consultation is now underway, so hopefully in the new year, we'll get a lot of those checkmarks off list as well. We discussed the terms and references with the government subcommittee, and unfortunately, Director or CAO, Director Galante, I want to say Director, but wasn't there, but we have all been told that the CAOs would be the representatives for the subcommittee at the time. We're looking for requesting a minister meeting and at the RMA conference, which I'll be attending on behalf of the city this year, so hopefully that goes as well. And yeah, we are going to be trying to apply for CARES grant to help with 50% of our funding for the 2019 costs, and there was a budget presented that we're still waiting on more detail that will probably come to us through budget as well. So thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Palat. Counsel, just to provide a really brief update, last week, Acting City Manager Galante, it's titles, eh? Yeah, I know, I know. Mr. Galante and I had an opportunity to attend the Midsize City Mayor's and CAO's caucus that was hosted by the town, but soon to be City of Beaumont, which I feel like there's an interesting trivia question that's available there. What's the only city in Alberta that doesn't have a hotel? And it turns out that the answer will soon be Beaumont. They are in the process of changing their status from, from a town to a city. They formally requested that, and apparently it's been approved by the Minister of Municipal Affairs, so they will soon become a city. But in spite of that, that they're a city, all of the events were actually held in La Duk at the Royal Executive Inn, which you see as you come across from the airport. So just a bit of a, a bit of an anomaly, I think, in the province. That wasn't the biggest thing to come out of the meeting. The organizers had actually set up an opportunity for us to tour the grounds of Edmonton International Airport and see their approach to really creating what they say, what they called, termed an airport city. And so Counselor Thiessen, you spoke about high tech. They see high tech, autonomous vehicles and research happening there. Obviously, there's the large retail component, which many of us will have seen, but a number of other aspects that I had sort of never considered of the airport, and actually maybe think about our own Grand Prairie Airport and, and maybe to a smaller scale, what sorts of activities might make sense directly adjacent to the airport. And so it was, it was insightful that way. They also had an opportunity for us to check out an autonomous bus. It is a partnership between diversified transportation and a number of other technology people tell us others in Alberta. You may have seen these, they're small little things that faces, look like they're facing two directions. They can handle about 12 passengers, and lucky for us, it broke down partway. And maybe it doesn't give a lot of confidence in autonomous vehicles, because it just had to go in a straight line. But the fact that they did have to reset it meant that the, the operator, and it does have an operator, because they're not allowed to run in Canada without an operator, so they had to get special permission, had to put the bus into sort of a, a mode that allowed us to see what all of the machine learning and data management systems were doing and what the, what the bus was actually seeing, which was pretty amazing. It could actually see the curb across the street, and every time cars would go by, there were shadows. It was, it was pretty impressive. The largest item that came up during the actual discussion during the meeting that is relevant to council is the significant concern around the future of MSI. Council members are well aware that that program is ending in 2022, which seems like it's a long ways off. And in fact, Minister of Municipal Affairs presented and highlighted the fact that, that their government was proud to be able to provide that longer term of security in that program. But council will also be aware that from the minister to the premier and others have committed that they were going to have a legally legislated replacement for the program before their term ended. And there's some concern now that that may not fit into legislative agenda. I mean, they only have so much time to put proposed bills in front of the legislature. And so it, the minister highlighted the fact that we could support his efforts with his cabinet colleagues by highlighting the fact that this is something that needs to get done. There's only, there's only so many hours in the day or so many papers in a sitting of the legislature, and the minister, you know, highlighted that his colleagues needed to appreciate and understand the relative importance of this one. And when you recognize that it, number one, applies to all communities across the province, and ultimately, strong communities are the foundation of a strong province, having the appropriate infrastructure dollars enables us to do that, that would be a good reason. And then the second one that was a bit of a surprise that was lost on a few others was that the province has actually mandated through the Municipal Government Act, municipalities to have capital plans that run to 2023. So they actually created a law that says that municipalities must have a capital plan that runs to 2023, yet they're only providing capital funding and a commitment to capital funding to 2022. And, and so that misalignment is a significant issue, and I think that at least if council, if we get a chance to talk to cabinet members, members of the government, particularly cabinet members and members of the government, to highlight that misalignment, say, well, look, you guys, you know, as the provincial government, put this requirement on municipalities, that's, should be reason enough alone for this to make it into the legislative calendar for this fall sitting. I think there's a relatively small window of opportunity. Mayor Don Iverson joined us as a speaker at the start of the meeting. That's something the cities of Edmonton and Calgary are pushing. If we add the combined voice of the Midsize Cities Caucus, which is 22 members in those cities and towns, representing about 900,000 people, and about 40% of the seats in the legislature are represented from mid-sized cities. We are a significant constituency, and we should approach issues in that way. And so just encourage council members, if you get a chance to talk to anybody that's in government, encourage them that they need to make some time on the agenda for this in this, in this fall sitting. And with that, I had nothing else. We'll go to council member roundtable, and who's, who's prepared and ready to go? Counselor Friesen, thank you. Looking for volunteers, and away she goes.
Look at me go. Someone wants to get home. So last week was a really busy week in Grand Prairie. It was Small Business Week, so I was able to attend a number of events there and had a wonderful time as a small business owner myself. I attended the Women in Business Lunch and another Women for Women event that same evening, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Small Business Awards. So I want to congratulate, I won't get into naming them all, because I know that I will miss some, but I will offer my congratulations to every nominee, as well as those who were selected as winners at, at that evening. And then I also attended the Business Showcase, which is also by the Chamber of Commerce, and that's actually a twice yearly event where chamber members get to showcase at a trade show who they are and what they do. So it was a great week, and shout out to our chamber for putting that all together for us. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. We'll next go to Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. But yeah, really busy last couple of weeks, lots of conversations about Parkside Inn, Chamber of Words, the Women's Lunch was great, but I'm going to do something a little different for my, for my thing, I guess, this time, and I don't know if it's normal, but I had an intriguing meeting last week with our Director of Corporate Services, Susan Walker, and it gave me a lot of hope that we're going in the right direction with our city's finances. Tonight was fitting to, to single you out on this one, I feel like. I know the business community is very concerned, and I know a lot of counselors are as well. I would have said, previous council before I was on here, I didn't have a lot of faith in the city's abilities and how we manage our money and transparency moving forward. I get the feeling from you that you have a lot of horsepower behind you that you want to do that. I also appreciate that we're allowed to go toe to toe every now and then, and it's, and it's fun, and it's, and it's, and it's, you know, it's in good spirits, and we're both looking for the same outcome. So I do appreciate that, and you do give me some confidence moving forward through the rest of this term that we're heading in the right direction. So I really appreciate what you're doing. So thank you, Susan.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor, Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just highlight one item. I went to the Public Health Unit on the day that influenza shots were first made available and got my shot, along with a couple of other counselors. It was, I'm highlighting it because I really do believe that it's something that's important for people to do. Many people may know that I myself have a compromised immunity, and so aside from keeping myself safe, I encourage other people to get the shots so that they don't expose people like me and, and other vulnerable people to the chance of catching the influenza virus. So it's an important part of the program that the province offers. It's, it's a free thing to get a flu shot. It's only painful for a moment, and it's well worth the effort. So thank you to AHS for promoting it and for delivering the service, and to all of those other areas around the city where you can go and get a flu shot.
Thanks, Counselor Blackburn. Counselor Thiessen.
Sorry, I was going to say something in retaliation, not in retaliation, but in, in response to the free shot, but I figured that's not appropriate. I, because I do know other places you can get free shots sometimes. I actually didn't do a lot, surprisingly enough, this week, so I'm only going to highlight the, the only item that I didn't do inside of the Hallet Halls, the City Hall, or with other elected officials, and that was I got invited to Peace Wapiti Academy to talk with three grade nine classes about the federal government and its interrelations with municipal governments, which is kind of an interesting topic, because right off the top, I say, well, we really don't have any interplay with them, but occasionally we get to talk to a minister and stuff, but we do also get other funding streams and stuff like that. But it did open up a big conversation as to how the levels of government work with each other and how their, their functions are delegated down through the, I guess, the pyramid of the hierarchical structure of from federal to provincial to municipal and all that. So it was really cool. In fact, I don't think I was very cool in grade nine. I think I got bullied quite a bit, but in this crowd of grade nines, I think I was one of the coolest kids in the class, and I was told so much so as well. So it was a joy, and I was asked to come back actually next week. So I'll see you again at Peace Wapiti Academy for two more grade nine classes next week. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I, I will highlight the Small Business Showcase I went to last week. It was a miserable time for mixing for me, because I ended up going to one booth and staying there the whole time in a great conversation, got to talk to the YMCA's Bridging the Gap Coordinator. I think three things from that conversation that were interesting to me. She was really excited to hear about this World Transit Program we're doing, because they have a lot of people who take part in the program but can't access it due to, due to busing, and so she was excited for that. Another thing that her, that her, that her clients have expressed to her is a need for youths to have spaces to hang out in our community. That's a big gap that she's seen after these kids are done school, there's nowhere for them to hang out, and that's why I'm excited that we're potentially going to be talking about the leisure center over this term, because we don't have anything on the north end of the city. And the third thing that I thought was awesome was she recently got a promotion to oversee programs throughout Northern Alberta, including programs in Edmonton. And I love the idea of the head office for our program beating Grand Prairie that's overseeing Edmonton. I, that just gave me a chuckle, and that made me excited, so I thought I'd point that out. Finally, I want to commend Mayor Given on, I hear you got your poppy today, and it's still on your jacket. I don't think I've ever kept mine for that long, so my first one of the season for that long, so commendable, and I'm excited for that season that we get to honor those who have served our country.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi, and it comes with practice. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I also attended the influenza free shot by Alberta Health, and I was joined by Counselor Bressi as well. And I'm not going to say too much, but when Counselor Bressi went into the room, there was crying going on. So I don't know if it was him or somebody else, but there was crying. Later that day, I attended the 2022 Arctic Winter Games Bid Committee Startup Meeting, and we'll see where that goes in the near future, but there was very well attended by a lot of prominent people in the community that have worked on games like this before. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Minhas.
Thank you, Mayor. I think most things are spoken. I was away last weekend, most of the part, but I got the influenza, that injection or flu shot. Then I found out, you know, I was in need for a tetanus shot, because it's been 12 years since the last time they came to me. So that was a good thing, otherwise I wouldn't find out if I don't go there. And then the pool, Bear Creek Pool was open. We were all there, I think. That was very great news for Grand Prairie, and thanks all the administration, especially for Harassio, put a lot of effort to get it done. And went to Saturday night on President Ball for the college, and there was, Don Njek announced that we're going to have a first degree completed university four year in 2020. That was great news for Grand Prairie, which is, we know what's going to be university for long term. And that, that was very good fun there that night, and a lot of stock and good stuff. That's about it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Minhas, and Counselor Friesen, you had something.
I did, thank you, but I will be quick. I just, it's one more thing that bears mentioning, because I think I was the only counselor there, but the Grand Spirit Foundation had their annual fundraiser, the Harvest Dinner, which is always a wonderful time, and it grew this year. They had, they, they moved the, the silent auction to another room, so they filled all the whole room with tables, and we just had a fantastic time. And that is, of course, raising money for several, in particular seniors facilities in our community and the region. So that was a wonderful time. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. I will note the one small thing that I'm surprised some other council members didn't bring up today. Staff have been working diligently to ensure that the Bear Creek Outdoor Pool will be in a position to be opened as soon as weather permits next year. Of course, that requires a period of breaking in and testing and ensuring that all the equipment and chemical cleaning of the water is done appropriately, and it's a pretty intense process. And so I really want to recognize administration's work in doing that, so that the public will be well served by this asset for the next 50 some years. I also want to recognize that council members, some council members are ready to take one for the team by doing the hard work to ensure that the water slide works. Counselor Thiessen, Counselor Bressi, Counselor O'Toole, myself, and a number of other city staff, and very small people who probably aren't city staff, also, also had an opportunity that probably should have been in school, also had an opportunity to ensure that we were doing our part to make sure that that facility was ready and ready to be open next year. I think all of us can report that the water slide is exciting, it is fast, and my hope is that residents will experience warmer weather next year when we open the facility than the first slides down that slide. But I want to, in all seriousness, I want to really appreciate staff doing everything we can to make sure that, that as soon as we're ready to go next year, that that will get into the sort of use and enjoyment of the community. And I also want to say thanks for the opportunity to be one of the first sort of clutch of people to be able to make use of that facility. It really didn't matter what the weather was like today, I was going to go, and I almost went the other day when Counselor Bressi challenged me, and it was just filled with slush. So appreciate the opportunity and looking forward to that getting, getting open to